We'll caution of August 18th, 2021 to order this evening. We know that Councilor Geary and Chinawith will not be able to be with us this evening. They had conflicts and so with that being said, we're going to have our discussion this evening on the Missing Middle Housing Code, which really directly relates to House Bill 2001. We have from the Planning Department, we have Planning Director Heather Richards and Senior Planner Chuck Darnell to be parts of the discussion tonight. So we'll turn it over to Heather to introduce the topic and then turn it over to Chuck to make the presentation. So Heather?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. It's a small but mighty crew this evening, huh? So tonight we want to bring to you the work we've been doing on the Missing Middle Housing Code. We are probably, I would say, about 80% of the way through in developing our code amendments to respond to the mandates in House Bill 2001. We took it a little bit further. We've been talking about revamping our residential code for the last couple of years and we're using this opportunity just to look at all residential housing types in McMinnville and thinking about the best way to move this forward for this community. It's a, the mandate from the state is a big mandate. It is something that will substantially change how neighborhoods develop in McMinnville. And so we want to make sure we're checking in with city council. There are some policy level decisions that we can be making as a community. A lot of it is directed to us from the state as to what we can and cannot do, but there is some leverage in there. And so we want to make sure we are interfacing with the council as we walk through this process and bringing that back to the Planning Commission as they put the details together. Our goal is to get to a final product here this fall, enter into a public process, probably in the winter in terms of open houses, and then bringing it back through a public hearing process to you as city council to adopt sometime next year. We're hoping to have it adopted by March. We have to have it adopted by June 30th of 2022. So tonight Chuck's going to go through what the mandates are, what the code amendments are that we've been developing with the Planning Commission. We'd like you to ask questions as we go. It's fairly dense material, a lot of details in it, and so we thought it'd be better to have a fluid discussion as we go rather than wait till the end for questions. So that I'll turn it over to Chuck. He's been working on this project for the city for the past two years now.
Thanks for the introduction. Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the intro Heather. I'll go ahead and share my screen here. Everybody see that?
Here we go.
All right. So this is the presentation line on the Missing Middle Housing work as Heather just described. This graphic that you see here is a kind of a branding that we're trying to associate with it. They were calling shaping up Missing Middle Housing and Residential Standards for the city.
Sorry, I was going to interrupt for just a minute. It didn't seem like we were seeing your full first slide, but it looks like this slide is in its entirety.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just fixed it, yeah. So tonight Heather already kind of provided a summary of this, but I'm going to do a real brief overview of House Bill 2001. I think everyone's fairly familiar with it. A summary of the work that's been completed to date and then go over an overview of the package of work and the products and materials that you as council will eventually see through that formal public review and adoption process. And then spend a bit more time tonight talking through some of those higher level policy decisions that the city will have and some of the options that we have in terms of implementing House Bill 2001 and then finish up with just a quick overview of upcoming public engagement and timeframe for review. So House Bill 2001 is commonly referred to as the Missing Middle Housing Bill and so that's the title that we've given this project in general. I think everyone's familiar, but this does basically require cities of certain sizes to allow the middle housing types in all areas of properties that are, that allow for the development of detached, single-family dwellings. And just wanted to point out too that it does not require that these middle housing types be developed in any area, but it's, it's an option that they can be developed. And so, you know, it's more of a focus on providing housing choice and housing options and opportunities for different housing types, not any particular requirement that these housing types be developed. So the middle housing that's described in House Bill 2001 includes duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhouses. So those are the Missing Middle Housing types that would be required to be allowed in the same zones and areas that allow for single-family development. So as Heather mentioned, that's, that is a, you know, quite a shift from our current zoning standards and some of the allowed and permitted uses that exist today. More specifically, the bill requires cities with a population over 25,000, and that includes McMinnville, to allow all middle housing types in areas zone for residential use that allow for a detached single-family dwelling and also a duplex on every lot or parcel that allows single-family dwellings. And those are differentiated because the duplexes are treated a little bit differently and within the House Bill and the OARs and are more specifically allowed on every single lot. There's a little bit more flexibility in some of those other middle housing types, but there is a differentiation between the two. So I wanted to kind of point that out that duplexes are more broadly required to be allowed on every parcel. And then with the middle housing, other middle housing types, there's a little bit more flexibility, which I'll, I'll get into in more detail tonight. So after the adoption of the House Bill at the legislature, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, went through what they call the rulemaking process where they developed OARs, Oregon Administrative Rules, that more specifically describe the requirements for cities to follow in implementing House Bill 2001. Those were adopted in December of 2020. Part of the rules was also the adoption and the development of what's referred to as a model code. And that's something that would be required to be followed if cities don't follow, create their own standards to implement House Bill 2001. So Heather, Heather mentioned that the ultimate deadline for large cities to adopt their own local code amendments to implement House Bill 2001 is June 30th of 2022. And again, if the city does not implement their own code amendments, the model code is allowed by law to be applied directly for any developer that wished to pursue middle housing. So I'll go through some of the work that's been completed to date. Heather mentioned that we have been working on this project for quite some time. The council is probably all well aware of the Great Neighborhood Principles work that was completed a few years ago, that was adopted by the council in 2018. Two of those Great Neighborhood Principles were specific to housing, housing for diverse incomes and generations and housing variety. And then another one of the comprehensive plan proposals that was included in the adoption of the Great Neighborhood Principles was that the city will develop codes that allow for the variety of housing types and forms and develop site and design requirements for those. And so the Planning Commission or Planning Department and Planning Commission have since then incorporated that work into their work plan over the last few years and have been plugging away on that work in anticipation of House Bill 2001 being adopted, but also just to further our own local goals of introducing more housing variety in the city. So in May 2019 through December 2019, the Planning Department worked with a consultant on some draft development and design standards for those Missing Middle Housing types. And we were working on that in close coordination and in anticipation of House Bill 2001 being adopted. So we were tracking that and making sure that our work was aligned with that and as consistent as possible, given the information that we had at the time. So we, we developed that draft, those draft materials and then brought it to the Planning Commission. They reviewed it in great detail over the course of January through the first half of 2020. Had five work sessions and provided a lot of great feedback and guidance on potential updates to that document. More recently in 2020, the Planning Department received two DLCD technical assistance grants to assist the city in getting ready for House Bill 2001. One of those was to complete an infrastructure analysis, which the bill had some language in it that allowed cities to analyze infrastructure and determine if there was any deficiencies in the system that would limit people from redeveloping into the types of, you know, more dense housing options that the Missing Middle Housing allows. And the city did contract with Jacobs Engineering and based on the thresholds that are required to be followed in that analysis, the engineering analysis identified that deficiencies did not exist that would allow the city to request an extension in the implementation of House Bill 2001. I believe you received a more detailed update on that a couple of months ago. The other technical assistance grant was to finish up an analysis of our draft code that we've been working on and bringing that into compliance with the House Bill 2001 administrative rules that were just adopted in December. So we had received those grants, but we did wait a little bit of time because we were waiting for the final administrative rules to be adopted. And like I said, those were just adopted in December 2020. I think there's a slight delay in the intended timeframe for that to occur, but we wanted to wait and make sure that we didn't move forward with any work that would be not consistent with those final adopted rules. So once those were adopted, we contracted with Herb's Works, Herb's Works Inc., who is the consultant that helped us on the initial draft. You might recognize them too. They helped with the city's center housing strategy. And they helped us with an analysis of the draft code that we had been working on and ensuring that it's consistent with the final adopted House Bill 2001 rules. In April, the Planning Commission reviewed their analysis and provided some guidance on options that the city has in implementing and I'll talk through some of those in more detail tonight. We also had three open houses in April, which we held by Zoom and there wasn't a lot of attendance, but we did record the meetings and so they're posted on our website so people can watch them if they're interested. So the eventual package of materials that we will be bringing to, bringing forward through the formal review process is going to be a fairly comprehensive package of materials. It is going to address House Bill 2001 and the requirements to implement the Missing Middle Housing options that the city is required to do by the new state law. But we're also kind of incorporating and reorganizing the code to have all of our residential design standards in one place, kind of a more comprehensive approach to the residential development standards and so that, that will be kind of a more robust package that will eventually come to you for review. So it'll include things like zoning text amendments, yeah, actual text amendments to the zoning district code language where we update permitted uses such as adding the duplexes and triplexes to the zones where we need to. And it'll also include the adoption of design and development standards. That's currently what we've been working on in more detail and what we're proposing to move forward with. And that's intended to be adopted as a new chapter in the zoning section of the code. So it would be a place where all of the residential standards for every different type of housing type, even ones that aren't necessarily required to be allowed per House Bill 2001, but have them all in one place and one section within the code. And it will include a few other things like apartments or multiple family. We're also working on incorporating single-room occupancies, which is another type of housing type that the Affordable Housing Task Force has been working on developing some standards for. So we're going to bring all that together into one cohesive package of materials and propose that that be adopted into the code as part of the House Bill 2001 implementation. So next I'll just go through a somewhat high level overview of the document that was included in your packet. This is the most recent draft of those residential design and development standards. This is the document that was reviewed in more detail by the Planning Commission in, well, I guess it was the first half of 2020, January to July of 2020, and then analyzed by the consultant more recently for compliance with the House Bill 2001 rules. The Planning Commission did review that analysis again in April and provided us with some guidance on that. And I mentioned I'll, I'll touch, I'll go into that in more detail tonight through the presentation. And again, if there's any questions as I go through these slides, feel free to just ask them. Some of this information is fairly dense. So if there are questions that come up, happy to answer them. Don't have to wait till the end. We can have some more discussion if, if needed. So the document's been structured to include, like I said, standards for all the residential housing types. And the way that we had, the Planning Commission had, was interested in drafting this was to include all of the Missing Middle Housing types that are required by House Bill 2001, but also include some other things. So like just single, single-family dwellings. There's also an interest in potentially having standards for what we're calling tiny houses and that would be a single dwelling, but just in a smaller scale. And so if someone was interested in developing smaller houses, maybe there would be different land development standards for those, such as smaller lots or different setbacks based on the scale of the development. And then also we're proposing to bring in the accessory dwelling unit standards that currently exist in the code and apartments as well. And single-room occupancies would be added to this as well. Just a note that the apartment standards that are included in the draft document are in very rough draft form and aren't very well developed. So that is something that'll be developed in more detail over the coming months. So the way that this, the document has been structured is it includes, the first half is pages for each housing type and then the second half is related to the design standards. So each kind of section of the code has, for each individual housing type, has an overview page. It describes the definition of the housing type, has guiding principles and photo examples. And then every housing type has a development standards table that includes, you know, your basic zoning information like lot dimensions, lot sizes, setbacks, building height and parking requirements. The way that the document was structured was to have different standards for different development scenarios. And the idea was that there would be development standards for infill, which we had always been assuming would be those situations where a middle housing type was being developed within, you know, an existing neighborhood, an existing built-out place. And in general, the focus has been to, you know, allow that to occur at the same standards that apply in the surrounding neighborhood or underlying zoning district. There is also options and scenarios for what we called kind of new development and having different standards for new development with an alley and without an alley. So that being, you know, whether a property has an alley in the back where vehicle access can occur or if it's a more traditional form where you have, you know, street frontage and a driveway on the front of the house. Each housing type is also proposed to be a subject to applicable universal design standards is how, is the term that we've drafted to describe these. And those would be design standards that would be applicable to all of the middle housing types. Well, all of the housing types potentially. And those universal design standards are organized into different categories, which I've, which I've shown here on the screen. And the intent behind the way that this was structured was that the universal design standards would function along with the minimum development standards. And the combination of those things would really drive, you know, what some of the minimum standards might be for, say, minimum lot size. You know, if you're developing a larger scale housing product, some of the universal design standards might require that the lot be larger to adequately accommodate that. Or vice versa, if you were developing a smaller scale housing product, you know, it could, could allow for a bit more flexibility. So that was kind of the intent was that these two things would function together and it would be more of a, somewhat of a form-based approach to to the overall standards and development standards and design standards.
Chuck, Council President Drapkin has a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on facade and I'm digging in on that particular aspect of the design standards because I, I want to know what type of regulations might be included in facade, in that, of course, we don't, I don't believe we want, I, I wouldn't want to promote, you know, a homogeneous aesthetic through, to the entire city. So could you just talk about what that means when you include facade? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I want to have the document opened up right in front of me. I'll get it going. But yeah, the facade, universal design standard was intended to kind of be the more architectural one of the design standards. So things like architectural details on the front facade of, of buildings. And yeah, that, that is something that needs to kind of be considered as, as we develop what those architectural standards are, that they aren't driving towards any, you know, one particular, you know, architectural form, that there is still ability for there to be some discretion in it design.
So is this where you would have like a design book essentially? That will be available to developers and builders?
Potentially. That's something the Planning Commission has kind of talked about is having some kind of examples of development forms that, that achieve the standards.
But I don't think, Chuck, I don't think we're intending to adopt a design book as a city that developers would then choose from to build homes. Where the design standards for the facade are really meant to be sort of a menu list of you need to do two of the following eight things to allow flexibility, to allow evolution of design, but to ensure that we have some sort of minimum standard, that there's architectural components being considered on these, especially public-facing facades.
Okay, so then is it, does it say like, would that kind of menu option include things like one of the following types of materials and/or something like that?
Yeah, we did.
Understand how, what, what's, what we would kind of be saying is within our purview.
Yeah, we, we did definitely try to draft it that way where it provided kind of the menu board of options, that it wasn't any one particular standard is required in every situation to allow that flexibility to occur and allow developers to choose from those things or potentially, you know, that two of the following need to be provided. So that was a, that was one approach to try and allow for that flexibility and not have the result be a very monoculture type of design, like, like you mentioned.
I guess my question is, when you say select two of the following menu options, what are the menu options?
Yeah, so it's not meant to be myopic in terms of, you know, two, you can choose wood trim, brick trim or stone trim. It's more of a bigger picture concept. So it's make sure that you don't, that you have some sort of breakup in the roof design. So it's not just one roof design throughout the whole neighborhood. We want to have a gable here or there, choose where you want to put it, things like that, bigger picture stuff.
Heather?
Beg your pardon?
Well, Heather, again, another example is we're seeing the development out on Baker Creek. I know that we've talked a little bit about houses differing colors to your neighbors and across the street. You want to have some variability as some HOAs tend to do. Is, is that some of the intent of the facade?
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm looking it up right now in the, what you guys had delivered to you. There are things in there like one primary entrance for each structure must either face the street right away or be an angle of up to 45 degrees from the street, those types of things. So it's, it's bigger structural elements rather than what I would describe as the aesthetic elements that can change with a property owner. You can change the color of your house when you repaint it, that type of thing. We don't want to be in the, you know, monitoring and enforcing house colors. But what we heard when the Baker Creek South Development went up with the LGI production subdivision, that there was way too much similarity between the homes. And it's mostly from what we can tell, because if you look at the front facades, they're actually, they have a lot of detail to them. It's really the form of those homes. They're rectangular boxes with the same type of roof design and similar fenestration patterns. And so that's what we're trying to get at, to sort of break up that type of design element that makes it look like a production neighborhood.
Okay, and then similarly, and I'm sorry, and I, and I won't ask any more questions after this. I'll let you get through your presentation.
No questions?
Good, okay. Well, so then this is outside of design, so maybe this is going to come about later and I should hold my question. But what about other standards in terms of, you know, kind of setting a, a bar for what we think is important for safe housing?
And what would that look like?
I don't know. I'm, I'm, well, I can suggest something if you don't mind. I'm thinking about the apartments on the corner of Hill and Baker and the fact that the fencing around it is inadequate for children. I, I know that's not necessarily building the house, but it certainly is a structural element.
Yeah, and we could look at things like that. None of our apartment complexes have impervious fencing surrounding the whole apartment complex because actually you do want eyes on the complex and not screening it out. But those, those, as we're working through these residential code amendments, we're, we're looking at the bigger pieces in terms of housing products and types, but we can certainly bring in other elements of residential regulations that, that the city council wants us to bring in as, at a policy level.
Well, I think that would be really interesting, especially given, you know, the tremendous feedback we've just received from, on these other developments. And that feedback keeps coming in, in a number of different ways. And I'd like the community to feel supported that we're listening and, and being responsive with this as we move forward.
Yeah, so we, when we first started doing this effort before House Bill 2001, Chuck shared with you, we had already started a residential development code rewrite. It's because of the feedback that we were hearing on the Baker Creek South Development. McMinnville has never had design standards for housing here and, and yet there's definitely a interest in it. And you do have, you do have some developers who have built really diverse neighborhoods in terms of architectural types. And then there are production neighborhoods throughout the community too. And so we said, let's start talking, we're hearing from the community that we need a minimum standard, one, minimum standard of design, one, and two, something that breaks up the homogeneity of these neighborhoods. And so that's what we started working on. So that's why Chuck was sharing with you that we are recommending that single-family dwelling units be part of this overall discussion in terms of design standards as, as we move forward with this House Bill 2001 work. And he'll share with you that the only way we can impart design standards on other housing types is if we also have it on single-family dwelling. So there has to be equity across the board.
Kelly, have your hand up.
As I recall, as they did the, after they did the Baker Creek South and then they were contemplating the North, there were design standards in the South and maybe they, they even adjusted it while they were building it. They were objecting to, they said they were too detailed. So I assume you're trying to get away from something like that.
Well, if you remember, there was, on the development south of Baker Creek Road, there was a condition of approval on that development that was kind of similar to past practice of requiring an architectural pattern book to be provided. But it was somewhat vague and it didn't have a lot of detail on exactly what that needed to respond to. So if you remember, a part of the, a large part of the review of the Baker Creek North Development, north of Baker Creek Road, was that the city, the Planning Commission and the council ended up including much more detailed design standards on that one as a condition of approval that every single home needed to meet these certain things. And so that, you know, that has been an evolution as we've gotten feedback from, you know, the community and some of those developments as they've occurred. And I think that was a, you know, the kind of the first step for the, the city and the, and the council. I think that was a, you know, the kind of the first step for the the city and the and the council and um upping the standard in regards to design standards that apply, you know, as we've um, moved forward with with development in that area. And that, some of those design standards that were included in the Baker Creek North conditions of approval had kind of come from some of our initial work on this, on this product. Um, and so it's been a way to kind of see how those uh, are being applied now that the the homes are in for review.
So you're saying that actually, uh, I'm assuming at least the people that buy the homes prefer to have uh, more of the more detailing as to how it should have looked. Or are you talking about individuals themselves?
You're gonna find, you're gonna find people who sit in all camps on this. Um, so it's more expensive. The more elements you put on a home, it's more expensive in terms of your upfront capital cost. But relative to the overall cost of the housing product, it's, you know, it's, it's not a huge expense. Um, and then um, it, there are also studies that show diversity of housing um, provides for more enduring value in neighborhoods. And so there's the long-term asset that you're protecting as well as a homeowner with the, with the more architectural components. To Remy's point though, if we get too prescriptive, so this is what we're finding with the Baker Creek North project, which has a lot of design standards on it. Um, with the Baker Creek South prod- project, we had design standards only on the front facades. And what we learned was it really needs to be all public facing facades because everyone's reacting to what they see when they drive downhill road. And if you drive into the development, it's actually a beautiful development if you drive into it and are looking at the front facades. So the Baker Creek North, um, we did it on all public facing facades. If we become too prescriptive though, they, the developer that then only has a handful of designs that can actually meet the prescriptions that we're providing. Um, and so that in and of itself creates a smaller, is less flexible for, you know, um, a variety of different designs. And so what we, what we need to make sure we do as a city is get the minimum standards that we want, um, talk about how much diversity we want in housing product, and then set up a process in which that diversity can occur.
Okay, thank you. No, I I mean, I was interested in what Remy wanted to, so that answers the question, I assume.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the design is the most impactful to the community as they drive around and look at these products. We're also gonna talk about private open space requirements. And that's also something usually people are talking about because that's what they can see, how close the homes are to each other versus, you know, the open space that's in the neighborhood and in parking. So there's, there's, there are certain common elements that are impactful to the community as whole. And then there's other elements that are impactful to the actual homeowner.
And is there anything in um, that addresses street design?
Not in this package of materials. You're talking about like right-of-way, actual right-of-way, streetscaping, and things like that?
Yeah, and 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 what we might be looking at or requiring to go in, I'm thinking, again, I'm thinking about um, you know, maturity of trees that are going in, having buried maturity of trees um, to try to create, you know, shade and neighborhoods and all of the things that go along with with that kind of stuff, but also some of preventative measures that we've discussed recently in terms of deterring um, speed on streets. And so I'm just wondering if, as we look at this, if that would be one of the considerations as 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 neighborhoods get improved, or if that's too broad and out of the scope of what we're talking about.
So that's, that's not necessarily in this scope. We have um, talked a lot about, you know, as, and you'll see when we show this to you, that the state's pushing for smaller and smaller lots. As you get into smaller lots, there's less and less opportunities for street trees because there's so much competition for that real estate frontage that's on the street with utilities and the driveway and everything else. Um, so we have talked, we've had really contentious discussions about how small is too small, and then it has to be alley loaded so you can protect the frontage so that you have the the street tree capacity. Um, because what we're finding right now is the street trees are the first things to go if they're in conflict or too close to utilities. And um, that's actually not what we want to see as a community. So that's, that's in this product. Um, what you're talking about, Remy, the landscape review committee is actually working on right now. We, we're under contract with a contract landscape planner, um, as we have a vacancy right now. And she's working with the landscape review committee on updating the landscaping code. And just today, they had a discussion about, we really should be talking about tree canopies rather than just trees, um, relative to how they provide shade and climate change issues and stuff like that. So they're starting to really explore all of those issues.
Uh, Sal, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Heather, uh, both of you, thank you for the presentation tonight. Um, I had just one question that is a little tangential to the broader topic, but since it's been mentioned a few times and I'm not sure I fully understand what the difference is. Can you just educate me on, you know, the the difference between an alley-loaded home and a street-loaded home? Does it, does it have to do with the width and allowed parking in the alley or?
Yeah, it it really, well, it really is where the access comes from. So if it's alley-loaded, the access comes from the rear. And if it's not alley-loaded, the access comes from the front, which is more your traditional development pattern with a garage in the front of the house and a driveway that goes out to the street. The main impact that it has on development standards for housing is that when you have a a front-loaded or a non-alley uh, type of design, uh, you know, the garage really dominates the facade of the home. Uh, it obviously has vehicular traffic there in the front of the home, and then that introduces conflicts with the pedestrian areas and uh, ability to provide street trees because you just have more driveway curb cuts along the street. And so that, the benefit of of the alley-loaded is it preserves that space in the front of the home for those other amenities, you know, pedestrian and street trees. Um, and it directs more of the traffic to the back of the home. And it also allows for lots to be smaller in a way that better meets our standards. Um, if you have a lot of front-loaded homes with with garages in the front of the home, and you try to have small lots, and this is kind of what we've seen in some of the recent uh, developments, is it becomes very difficult to achieve our street tree canopy standards in terms of street tree spacing and um, so that's, that's the biggest impact that the alley-loaded versus non-alley-loaded has on lot development.
Um, really, thank you so much. That helps. Uh, then just a couple of comments. I appreciate the shift in thinking to uh, uh, tree canopies rather than individual trees. Um, I hope that the canopies, you know, are not just limited to street corridors, that, you you know, I understand that we're gonna get increased densities around um, specific residential subdivision. But if those subdivisions can be developed in such a way as to preserve open space alongside, um, that would be, um, you know, I think, I think beneficial. Um, but, you know, all in all, I I really appreciate the uh, the work and and information.
Well, and um, part of, Chuck still needs to get through his presentation, but part of it, the private open space, the, the other thing we've heard from the community is how how do we preserve more of our natural open spaces that we have as we develop subdivisions? So we're not just doing a clear grade and putting up homes right next to each other. Um, and so we've had discussions about what does private open space look like? So what the developer needs to provide in terms of open space? And and how do you do it in such a way where you have these large places of natural open space for the people in the neighborhood to play in? And then public open space, the park system as well. Um, so this, this product will have what we call um, clear and objective standards. So by state law, everything has to be clear and objective. It can't be discretionary when it comes to housing development. So it's usually a percentage of, needs to be open space, you need to do this, that, or the other thing, and then the development just, you know, need to check marks. Um, we also are looking at, in another process at the same time, a natural feature study. And where we will inventory natural features and then require those to be protected as development occurs. And so that that will then also necessarily create clusters of housing development around these sort of natural spaces.
Right, so you're, you're, the code standard essentially drives the types of housing products that that can be be built, basically. Because you're not gonna be able to just bulldoze sixty thousand years of old growth trees or something. Um, okay, thanks, Heather. I appreciate it.
And I'll just kind of, one thing that I think Heather mentioned that the, you know, the right-of-way standards and things like that were in a focus of this work, but one of the design standards, the street frontage design standard, uh, focuses mainly on uh, how the lot is accessed, whether it's by a driveway in the front or in the rear through an alley. And there's some standards in there for minimum distances between driveways and maximum driveway width. And all of those numbers were developed by analyzing how much space is necessary to ensure that we're getting at least a tree on every lot. And so that's where those minimum distances, there was a focus on ensuring our street tree spacing and and developing what those numbers are. Um, so there, there was some focus of that in this work, even though they were more on the private uh, lot standards than the overall community standards, so. Uh, and then one last thing, Remy, I, in my initial response, I I had confused things a little bit because we did come re- reorganize some things in the most recent draft, but um, the facade design standard, as Heather mentioned, does speak more to those broader things like uh, having a prominent entrance on the home. Some of the more architectural standards got shifted into the compatibility design standards. So that's where you see those menu board of options um, that, that I was speaking to. Uh, I apologize for that. Um, so, and I, and I, I'm not planning to get into detail on these tonight. Um, might be something we can do in the future and as we continue to refine this document and and uh, you know, get the design standards more to a point where we feel comfortable with them, but just wanted to provide this as an overview tonight, and then we're gonna get a little bit more detailed into some of the House Bill two thousand and one requirements. Yeah, Kelly?
Can I ask one more question? Uh, in regard to what Sal was talking about, I, I really think there does need to be a discussion about natural features and uh, how to maintain them between different ownership too, because as I understand, if owners change, the requirements on that might change. Is that so? That seems to be what happened out on the Baker Creek North.
Uh, well, they give me the oak trees?
Yep.
Um, so, um, wh- when we come up with it, inventory, uh, we can only protect what we've identified that we're going to protect and regulate. Um, so what we'll, what we're doing with our natural features um, work is identifying, one, tree copses that we want to protect. So that, that would be, you know, so for instance, in the West Hills, there's um, ecological systems with some protected bird species in them. We want to make sure we're protecting those tree species, the oaks over at Lynnfield. You know, there's, there's a variety of different tree stands that we want to make sure we're protecting those as tree stands. Types of trees we want to protect. So if it's oaks over a certain age, so they're still healthy, we want to protect those, those types of things. Once we've identified them, because right now in our code, we don't protect anything that's a natural feature. We have, we have no inventory of this stuff. So we have no re, we have no um, methodology to say to a developer, you have to protect that. Um, so uh, we ask and we encourage, sometimes we plead, but it doesn't always work. Um, but the natural features inventory will come to you, be drafted as part of the comp plan. And then we're gonna have development code amendments that then say, you developer shall protect those things that are identified in the comp plan inventory. And you won't be able to build within so many feet of it, and you'll have to do this and that. And then once they're protected, well, they'll be put into either private open space or public open space. If it's private open space, an HOA needs to be established that will maintain it, and that will be part of the land use decision.
Thank you very much. That helps. Will that have the same effect on already uh, developments that are already in process?
No, so we can't retroactively impose regulations on developments that are underway and have land use decisions on them. Um, if, we can identify landmark trees, so um, you know, obvious ones like the sequoia tree by the library or something like that. We can identify those and say that those need to be protected and being, and being wants to do anything with them, they need to go through a review, just like you do with historic landmarks in terms of structures. Um, we can do that.
Okay, I look forward to seeing that final report. And thank you. I'll try and be very quiet. No.
No, that's, questions are good. And we, we have a lot going on, so it will be all rolling through to you over the next six to nine months.
Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. Um, so this, again, is just a brief overview of uh, the document structure and uh, for, for each universal design standard, similar to each individual housing type, there's a section for each one. Um, there's an overview page that provides the description, the intent, uh, examples. And it also includes the great neighborhood principles it's attempting to uh, respond to. And then each individual, individual design standard section has, has a specific standards that need to be followed. And some of them do have that menu of options that we were talking about already to allow for some flexibility to occur. Um, but I'm not gonna get into great detail on the individual standards themselves. It's just uh, kind of introducing you to the structure of the document tonight, so. Uh, but but feel free to browse through that in more detail. I mean, we will, at some point in the future, be getting into the conversations about the individual standards in in much greater detail. Um, so if there are any more questions on that, I'm gonna shift now a bit more into House Bill two thousand and one and the rules and some of the some of the areas where uh, the rules specifically prescribe how we need to implement House Bill two thousand and one and also identify some of the options that we have and some of the discretion the city has in implementing House Bill two thousand and one. Um, so some of the higher level topics that I want to touch on are the zones where the missing middle housing types are allowed. Um, how we treat infill versus new development. I briefly mentioned that there was those three different scenarios of standards that we were working on developing. Um, some of the rules may have some impact on how we want to implement that and if we want to implement those three different scenarios. Uh, talk through design standards and then touch on a few more specific topics uh, that are uh, regulated by the rules, including off-street parking, lot sizes for middle housing, and whether we want to allow detached or attached uh, missing middle housing. So the rules that were adopted included more specific language. I kind of shared the broad language that was in the bill. But it includes a definition for what zone for residential use is. And it basically is a zoning district where residential buildings are the primary use and implements a residential comprehensive plan map designation. So for the city of McMinnville and our current structure, that is uh, all of our residential zones, R one, R two, R three, and R four. Um, well, sorry, not all of them, because we do not have the R five zone, and that one is specifically just for multiple family and higher density. So it is majority of our zones, uh, the R one through the R four zone, those are the zones that missing middle housing will need to be allowed. Uh, I see a couple of hands up. Is there a question?
Uh, let's see, uh, Sal, your, your hand, is it still up from the previous time?
Yeah, that was errant, sorry.
Thank you. And then, uh, Remy, you're next then.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, um, this is, I, I know this is, the information is right in front of me. I just want to make sure. So this is, oh, this is in only R one, R two, R three, and R four, not in any other zones which also allow housing like our commercial zone, for instance. Or office residential. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that is correct. So the, the House Bill by, by the state law and by the administrative rules must be implemented in the R one, R two, R three, and R four zones. Um, the OR zone is, is unique, and the planning commission had a brief discussion about that because that zone already allows for uh, everything up to multiple family. Um, so it would already allow for the duplex and triplex and quadplex. And so there may be some discussion to be had on whether there's an, and this is what the planning commission briefly discussed, but didn't get into much detail on um, of whether there is interest in having the same standards apply in all of our zones instead of having different standards for the residential zones and then for the OR commercial zones. So eh, yeah, that's a good question. And that's something that, that I think we'll need some more thought and discussion.
So just to be clear then, your response is that it only requires us to apply this in R one, R two, R three, R four. However, we have the ability to make a decision to also include the new set of standards for OR and commercial.
Correct, yeah. The city would have that option and that decision to make. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is just a map that the consultant had put together that shows all of the areas of those four zones throughout the city. And because we haven't implemented the R5 zone yet, even though it is on the books, this map basically just shows all of our residential zoned areas in the city. So that is where the missing middle housing allowances will be applicable. So I had mentioned that the draft design and development standards had been set up to potentially allow for some flexibility in development standards, and that was intended to be flexible based on the housing type that was envisioned and the housing form, and having some of those design standards potentially drive, you know, the scale of, you know, things like minimum lot size and things like that. That was kind of the idea and the thought behind the development of the structure of the code and the way that it was structured. And that may have required a more flexible residential zoning district to be established, where density was a little bit more fluid throughout an area, for instance, where you could have different lot sizes throughout the development with different housing types that could be provided on those lots. Some of the Oregon administrative rules that were adopted may have some limitations on that, and being able to have an approach in that manner, primarily because density maximums are not allowed to be applied to the middle housing types. And many of the base siting standards for OARs that are, or for the middle housing types within the OARs relate back to the underlying zoning minimums and how those are applied to single-family dwellings. So this, just in a little bit more detail, again, shows those three different scenarios that were envisioned. And again, infill was always intended to be the development standards that would apply in those situations where a new missing middle housing type is going into an existing neighborhood. And the intent has always been that the development standards there would match the existing zone, and therefore match the character and compatibility with the surrounding lots in the same neighborhood. The new development standards are those two other columns, and those were the ones that were intended to potentially be more flexible, maybe allow for smaller lots or smaller setbacks, but that was really going to be dependent and driven by the housing type and form. So like I said, a smaller scale housing product maybe would have different standards based on some of its components and its design features. But there are some things within the rules that could have an impact on our comfort level with having options like that within the code. One other thing that is within the OARs that I just want to introduce to the council so that you are aware of it, there is an option that was created within the rules that would allow a process of applying provisions that middle housing types be allowed on a certain percentage of lots throughout the city. The breakdowns shown here on your screen, I won't read it in detail, but certain housing types would be allowed on certain percentages of lots. There's some language in the rules about how that be established equitably, and how those percentages have to be continually monitored and updated over time. So those things were discussed with the Planning Commission in our more recent work session meetings, and their guidance that they provided to the Planning Department at this time is that the percentage of lots-based program would be fairly difficult for a city of our size with the staff resources that we have to manage over time. And they also feel that a more consistent application of allowing the middle housing types throughout the entire city is more equitable for the entirety of the city, and kind of better aligns with our great neighborhood principles and intent of every neighborhood having the same amenities and features. So that's their recommendation, is to not pursue that percentage-based calculation approach, and to instead just move forward with allowing the middle housing types throughout the city. Those flexible residential development standards, the new development with either an alley or no alley, like I mentioned, those were developed with the thought that there could be potentially smaller lot sizes or things like that. And the Planning Commission has some concern with that, primarily based on some of the rules that are related to off-street parking that can be required. And I'll get into that in just a moment. But the Planning Commission's thought is that, an idea that they threw out, and we need to explore a bit further, but their initial guidance was that we potentially still have those standards in place, those alley and no alley, new development standards that have smaller minimum lot sizes and potentially smaller setbacks and things like that. But to only allow those through a planned development process. And the Planning Commission had some initial ideas of potentially having some, if someone wanted to pursue a development like that, that the city could have some additional standards in place that would, you know, potentially require a distribution of different housing types throughout the development. Because like I said earlier on, there's no requirement that a variety of housing types be provided as part of House Bill 2001, it's just that they are all allowed. So as the Planning Commission's thought is, maybe there's some standards for requiring there to be some distribution of different housing types throughout a development, or having some standards, if you're interested in pursuing the planned development approach, that parking still be provided at our existing code standards. So, see, Remy, you've got your hand up, but just in general, interested in the city council's thoughts on those couple of topics, and whether there's any guidance or direction you want to provide staff.
Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple thoughts here. So can you talk to me about how this first bullet point, percentage of lots-based program would be, maybe I just misread that. Are you basically talking about doing some sort of inclusionary zoning with that, where if we're trying to require a certain percentage of lots be built to an affordable housing standard, and then is that legal?
No, so it's actually the opposite, Remy. It's not a mandate that this percentage of lots needs to be developed in these different types of housing products. The state OAR says, you city need to provide that the options available for, if you go back to your other slide, Chuck, that for triplexes in the city of McMinnville, eighty percent of the lots that are, meet the criteria for this bill, triplexes must be allowed on eighty percent of them. Not we're mandating that eighty percent of the lots have triplexes. And so what it does is it sets up areas, some communities are choosing areas of their community where they're not allowing these missing middle housing types. And the discussion at the Planning Commission is, you'll continue to set up segregated neighborhoods, where you have neighborhoods that are only single-family dwelling units, that have a certain, you know, expectation of wealth and household incomes versus other neighborhoods that have a variety of housing types.
So the discussion at Planning Commission is that it's one rule that applies to McMinnville? Okay, great. And then do you mind going back forward to the next slide? See if I can remember my other question. Oh, on this, design standards conversation, I have another question, which is that, do you, so if the city, if the council did decide to go with one design standard for the city, or that, those design standards that you were talking about, and meaning also including office residential, and also including commercial, because housing can be built in those zones, then would, would those design standards then only apply to housing projects? Or if there was a project that was purely commercial, would it apply? And how would it apply if you had a building that was mixed, say, like the Taylor Dale building, for instance?
Yeah, so we, in terms of the discussion of bringing these standards that we're putting together right now into an urban environment, like the commercial zone, the C3 zone, the downtown environment, we've had discussions about maybe there's a need to do a separate type of package for that environment, because you're going to be, you're going to be looking at different setbacks. I don't think the city wants to dilute the C3 zone with low-density housing. You really want to sort of preserve some of these areas for the higher-density housing opportunities. And then to the conversation of design standards, yeah, how do you create something that's compatible across the different types of structural uses, you know, housing versus commercial and mixed use? Because what we're finding is with the downtown design standards, it works really well for commercial products, but not for housing products. So I would recommend that that's a separate dialogue and a slightly tweaked version of this, that makes more sense in that urban environment.
Yeah, and that was a specific recommendation in the city center housing strategy, too, was to develop more of those urban form of residential design standards, because it, you know, it's a different environment, and you're trying to promote more of that walkable, pedestrian-oriented development pattern. So that is something that was recommended as part of that project, for that more dense city center area.
We can definitely, we'll have the template, so we can definitely do that work and put it together for the C3 zone and the OR zone on a similar template to this, which means having those universal design standards for all structural types in that particular zone, and applying them. I just, I would suggest they would look a little bit different than the ones that we've put together for the residential neighborhoods.
Any other thoughts on this topic before I move on?
So Chuck, I want to explain the second bullet point a little bit more. When we first were working on this after we adopted our great neighborhood principles, our discussion was, we really wanted a variety of housing types in the neighborhoods, and not just have a subdivision of 7,000 square foot lots, and then every 7,000 square foot lot has a, you know, different, has a 2,200 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bedroom on it. So we originally were talking about one residential zone, and then people could come in and say, I want to build a tiny home. A tiny home requires a 2,500 square foot lot, but you develop it in such a way where it's compatible with all the other housing product around you. Then when the state adopted their Oregon administrative rules, they adopted them in such a way, and Chuck will walk you through this, that when you go down to a certain size of lot, and you say, I'm going to allow a 2,500 square foot lot for a single-family dwelling unit, you need to still allow that same 2,500 square foot lot, and it may not get as low as that, but this is an example, for one of these missing middle housing types. And by the way, you don't have to provide parking when you get down to that smaller a size. And so the anxiety in a place like McMinnville, where people are reliant upon cars to get around, is that you're now creating a situation where it's just not feasible in terms of the parking requirements, once you get into those smaller lots and the more units on the lot. And so it comes, our idea of having this flexibility of designing neighborhoods with a variety of different housing types and a variety of different housing lots, now has become sort of something that's not as flexible, because the state is mandating what will happen on each size of lot, rather than us saying, this is what we would like to see happen in terms of the different housing types. So the state's coming and saying, this lot size, all housing types, we were talking about it from a perspective of this housing type, this type of lot size, that reflects that housing type. And so that sort of flipped our whole program on its side.
Yeah, and I'll get into some of the details of that here in a minute, but yeah, thanks Heather, because that was kind of a different explanation of how I was trying to describe that. You were trying to have the design standards and building form that was desired, you know, drive what the development standards might be for the subdivision, the lot size that would be required for certain housing types, they'd be more related to the end housing product and form that would be on the lot. And the rules have complicated that approach a little bit, so. Well, next item was just touching on design standards. So the OARs that were adopted provide four options that the cities can follow in applying design standards to middle housing. You can apply the design standards in the model code, which was that model code that was adopted at the state level. You can apply standards that are less restrictive than the model code. You can apply the same clear and objective standards that apply to detached, single-family homes. Or you can go through an alternative design standard review process with DLCD. And there's some specific language in the rules about how they would review that, but basically they relate to, DLCD would maybe be making a determination of whether those alternative standards cause unreasonable cost or delay. And my initial read of the review criteria for that seems like it would be fairly difficult to propose alternative design standards that don't meet those thresholds about unreasonable cost and delay. So, like we had presented, the draft design standards that the Planning Commission has been working on included those universal design standards, and had been proposing that those would apply to all housing types, including the detached, single-family. So that approach would allow for those universal design standards to also be applied to the middle housing types, and that is allowed by OARs. The OARs do require, like Heather already mentioned, that the standards be clear and objective, and there's this specific language in the rule, which I won't read, but basically requires that they scale with the number of dwelling units, and they can't be, then they need to scale with form-based attributes. So there would need to be some analysis in ensuring that the standards that we've developed are meeting that cleared, objective requirement, and meeting the scalability requirements of the OARs. And so Planning Commission's guidance that they provided to staff on that was to continue with that approach of applying the same design standards to all housing types, including single-family, which, as we've mentioned, would be new for McMinnville. But that would be allowed by House Bill 2001. The Planning Commission, you know, wants to spend some time ensuring that those design standards are clear and objective. As I mentioned, the alternative options are using the model code or pursuing those alternative design standards. Some portions of the model code are very different than the city of McMinnville's current standards, and like I mentioned, the alternative design standard review process might be difficult. So that's the approach that we are proposing to take, is to allow for the city to develop these universal design standards that we feel are compatible with the city of McMinnville, and with the existing character of what makes McMinnville special and unique, and then be able to apply those to all of the middle housing types. So any thoughts on that, or any differing opinions on that? If not, I'll continue on to the next topic. I don't see any. So that was the last kind of high-level topic. The next few, like I mentioned, are a bit more specific, but this next one is one that is kind of ending up having a big impact on our approach to the universal design standards that Heather was mentioning. So the OARs got very specific in the off-street parking standards that cities can require. So they basically specify the maximum number of off-street parking spaces that a city can require. And it's kind of confusing, but that's the maximum that the city can require. A developer could always build more if they want to, if they want to provide that option for their future tenant or buyer. But it's just the maximum number that a city can require. And it's basically that you cannot require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. So for a duplex, based on the OARs, the city could not require more than two off-street parking spaces. Just for comparison, our existing code requires two off-street parking spaces for each duplex unit, so a total of four. The new requirement per the OARs would be no more than two. Cottage cluster, townhouse, triplex, and quadplex, all, no more than one per unit. But the triplex and quadplex get even more specific, and this is the scalability that Heather mentioned, of the parking standards changing based on the size of the lot. So if you have a lot that's very small, less than 3,000 square feet, the maximum number of off-street parking spaces that the city could require for a triplex, if a triplex was allowed on that small of a lot, would be only one. And then it goes up to two as you get up to about 5,000 square feet, and then anything 5,000 square feet or larger, the city could require a maximum of three spaces total. So if that makes sense, basically the smaller the lot is, the less parking the city can require. The same scalability applies to quadplexes within the adopted rule. Uh, the same scalability applies to quadplexes within the adopted rules. Uh, but this one goes up to seven thousand square feet and four spaces uh total that the cities could require. Those numbers of five thousand and seven thousand square feet are are in there for a reason because there is an option for cities to establish minimum lot sizes for triplexes and quadplexes at the five thousand and seven thousand square foot size, uh respectfully. Um, and I'll touch on that in a moment as well, but this uh is what ki- kinda caused some um concern with the planning commission because we were potentially considering aligning those more flexible development standards to be used to you know, maybe have a smaller lot size for a triplex, say. Um, but our assumption was that we were still gonna be able to um follow our existing parking standards. Uh, under the O A Rs, if we did allow for the triplexes and the quadplexes on the smaller lots, uh, the maximum number of parking that we could require would reduce based on the numbers that you're seeing here on the screen. Um, a couple other things, just to point out, uh, parking for the middle housing types uh needs to follow the same surfacing dimensions, landscaping, access and circulation standards that apply to single family dwellings. And basically what that means for McMinnville is, uh, you know, our single family dwellings are allowed to, you know, just have a driveway that provides it could could be the only parking for the site, um, you know, a driveway that provides access that you can pull in and back out of, so. The same type of approach would be required to uh be followed for the middle housing types. And the O A Rs do allow cities to allow on-street parking credits to satisfy off-street parking requirements, so. As you can see, there's a lot of standards within the rules that allow for reductions in parking and I think uh we're aware, the council's aware that, you know, off-street parking uh and on-street parking is often a a fairly contentious issue in some of our subdivisions even currently and uh could be even more so if um, you know, you're talking about a variety of different housing types within neighborhoods. Um, this is just an example of one, one section of the model code, which again, if we didn't have our own standards, we would have to follow this. Um, the model code states that on-street credits shall be granted if if uh if the parking space is available. Um, so this, there's, this is just one example of some of the areas of the model code that aren't really aligning with I think McMinnville's kind of intentions and and desires for development standards for residential housing types. Um, so the planning commission's guidance was to to not not allow for those on-street parking allowances. Uh, like I said, just based on some of the recent community concerns that we've seen in in the development of other subdivisions. Um, and this also, like we've already kinda discussed, resulted in a lot of discussion and concern with that. Um, with the new development standards and allowing that flexibility for potentially smaller lots. Um, so the planning commission didn't make a final or give us any kind of final guidance on this, um, but they did ask for some additional analysis of looking at different housing types on different sized lots and what that might look like with off-street parking provisions and uh, we haven't had an opportunity to do that work yet, but that is something that they're interested in exploring in a bit more detail. So this is probably the most, I guess, probably most impactful set of standards within the O A Rs on the the work that we have been drafting.
Now, I would say this is the most impactful for the user, right, for the person living in the neighborhood and the residents. It's the design standards is probably impactful to the developer, um, because it would be a requirement to meet the design standards, but the the way the O A Rs is written, it it essentially um decreases by half the off-street parking requirement, so there there will be a lot of reliance on the on-street parking um, for households in these units and it increases the ability, the number of units on a lot to be you know, four times as much.
Do we have to go with their standards or is that what you're saying, we should probably develop our own?
Well, the the parking standards here, we we have to follow those, so if the city decides to allow triplexes and quadplexes on smaller lots, if one is proposed, uh, let's just say someone who proposes a quadplex on a four thousand square foot lot because the city has decided it's allowed, we cannot require more than two parking spaces by by the rule of the for the the law within the rule.
Thank you, that does seem kinda rough.
Yeah, and maybe I'll jump into the next topic because they are very much related. Um, so the O A Rs do allow some options for cities in determining what minimum lot sizes should be for the middle housing types. Duplexes are required to be the exact same as single family dwellings in the underlying zone. So I I mentioned earlier on that duplexes are treated a little bit differently and uh, within the rules and they're basically required to be allowed on every lot that allows a single family dwelling. Uh, the rules allow for more flexibility for triplexes, quadplexes and cottage clusters. Um, townhouses are up there on the screen too, that one's fairly straightforward in the rules, we have to allow a minimum lot size of fifteen hundred square feet, uh, average, oh, sorry, uh, in a townhouse development. Um, so, but for triplexes, the flexibility that's pr- provided is that the city could establish a minimum lot size that's um larger than the minimum lot size of the underlying zone. Um, that applies to triplexes, quadplexes and cottage clusters. For McMinnville, um, that actually won't work for triplexes, but we do have some flexibility within quadplexes and cottage clusters, which I'll get into in a moment, so. But if uh for triplexes, if the minimum lot size for a single family dwelling is equal to or less than five thousand square feet, uh, the city couldn't require that the minimum lot size for a triplex be uh greater than five thousand square feet. If the minimum lot size for a single family dwelling is over five thousand square feet, then it must match uh, that of the single family dwelling for the middle housing types. Um, quadplexes is the same thing, but at and and cottage clusters, but at seven thousand square feet as being that threshold. And I'll, I'll get into something that explains that a little bit more clearly here in a moment, but just for reference, the current minimum lot sizes in McMinnville's residential zones are are shown here on the screen. Uh, nine thousand, seven thousand, six thousand and five thousand. So our four is five thousand, that's our smallest uh minimum lot size in our zones that allow for single family development. Um, some of our zones have larger minimum lot sizes for duplexes and town townhouses, um, and also density standards for multifamily that are based on minimum lot area per unit. Uh, for triplexes and quadplexes, um, and for those duplexes, those standards that are in our code now are not gonna be able to be used anymore because they aren't consistent with the minimum lot sizes required by O A Rs, so there will be some amendments to to those sections of the code. Um, but this, this kind of explains what I was uh describing there before in a little bit more clarity, hopefully. Um, based on our current minimum lot sizes, triplexes would have to be allowed in all zones at the same minimum lot size as single family dwellings. Um, and that's because our smallest minimum lot size is in the R four zone of five thousand square feet and that's the threshold that's established within the O A Rs. Um, cottage, quad, or quadplexes and cottage clusters um provide a little bit more flexibility. Um, so if the minimum lot size is less than seven thousand square feet, the city could decide that the minimum lot size for quadplexes and cottage clusters should still be um, seven thousand square feet. This would be applicable in our R three and our R four zones where the minimum lot size for single family dwellings is less than seven thousand, so six thousand and five thousand. Um, in those zones, the city could decide that quadplexes and cottage clusters are allowed, but only if they have a minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet. Um, so what that means is there is an opportunity, I guess, for the city to decide whether they're wanting to be some consideration of maybe only allowing triplexes or quadplexes or cottage clusters on slightly larger lots that may be determined to be more um able to accommodate that type of development uh in a compatible way with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, so the the maps here kinda show where that would be applicable. Um, the lots that they kinda show up as black on the map here are lots that are currently under five thousand square feet. So if the city decided that we wanted to set a minimum lot size for triplexes at five thousand square feet and a minimum lot size for quadplexes and cottage clusters at seven thousand square feet, um, those lots that are shown in black would be too small, you know, uh, too small of a size to accommodate those um, those types of middle housing types. Uh, similarly, these lots that show up as kinda red on the screen are lots that are between five thousand and seven thousand square feet. So those are lots that are of a size that wouldn't accommodate quadplexes or cottage clusters if we decide we wanna establish a minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet for those um, types of housing types. Um, so that gives a little bit of a visual representation of of that. And and this is the topic that, like I mentioned before, the planning commission was kind of grappling with and asked for some more analysis of uh, just looking at minimum lots, di- different sized lots and how those could accommodate the different uh housing types.
Uh, Remy has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one thing I would be interested in being, uh, seeing these two maps um overlaid so that we can get a a more um thorough idea of how much land you're talking about actually being excluded here. And then, you know, I do have a a a concern and I think I I would wanna have a lot more discussion around this because I I do have a concern that we would be excluding lots from um and and what looks from this like a significant amount, I'm not really sure what percentage of the city we're really talking about that's on buildable loan that uh the buil- buildable land that's zoned for residential in some way. But I would have some concern about excluding land when the intent of the uh legislation was to increase density and to increase variety of housing types in in various neighborhoods. I understand the that you're correlating it to lot size and not to neighborhood. Um, but but I guess I would wanna hear more about specifically why we would be excluding um, excluding the lot size because even though we're talking about, uh, you know, say a a triplex, um, there's nothing that says that a triplex could not be um smaller in and of itself uh, on a smaller lot size with smaller individual units. Um, uh, that's kind of, this is some of my initial thoughts.
Yeah, so to Remy, the 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 other chart, and maybe Chuck, in a future PowerPoint, we will, we can put the other chart against on the same slide as as these types of charts, which says that if a triplex goes on a lot lesser than five thousand square feet, the city can only require two parking spaces for the triplex or one parking space for the for the triplex. And if, but the other thing I think we need to analyze is, so in McMinnville, when we were going through a process of um land efficiencies, McMinnville went into a skinny street um development uh allowance. It looks like back in the eighties and nineties for land use efficiencies, and so we have a lot of existing neighborhoods with skinny streets where um, it's difficult to park on both sides of the street, so you've already lost like half of your on-street parking. And then when you come into these neighborhoods and you apply these different types of densities without any off-street parking, that creates an even more significant concern. The discussion with with this parking discussion, it was being driven by the larger metro communities and their response to the smaller cities that said, this is really problematic because we don't have transit. We have contractors as an industry who have pickup trucks and trailers and everything else. Um, that what we need to do is implement a residential parking permit program so that those people who needed extra on-street parking spaces could buy them. Um, but then that creates an equity issue in terms of affordability, so it's it's something that we need to look at all the different levers and figure out, you know, what makes sense and what doesn't make sense in terms of how our residents are living in in these neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go down into the southwest neighborhoods, some of those neighborhoods, when you drive around in them, parking parking has become a really big issue, and the other thing I wanna add on to this analysis, Chuck, is um uh, parked car accidents, so when people are hitting the parked cars on the streets, because we're seeing a lot more of that as well, um, to see where that's occurring too, because it's become so tight in the neighborhoods as people are driving through it, that those households that are parking their cars on the street are having their cars hit by other cars that are driving down the street.
Heather, as you talked, there's a great example of that in the southwest part. One block north of Old Sheridan on Alexandra, that Alexander, that is a really difficult uh piece to go from Goucher over to Cypress. And there are a lot of work trucks there and you just can't get through, so that's a good example.
Well, and then there's the connectivity issue, you know, if you if you if cars are hitting other cars that are parked, you know, that you've got problems for bicyclists and pedestrians too.
Yeah, and that and that came up in the discussion too, because um the recommendation was, well, remove your bicycle lanes off the street so that you can get more cars on the street. So, you know, it's it's, there's only so much real estate, so some something's gonna give and the question is what gives and and what what makes the most sense for your community.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, we we obviously want to do a lot more analysis of of this too and and looking at you know, what, I took a point, what percentage of of the city would be excluded based on this. Um, I think there's consideration maybe, and and Heather was involved in the rulemaking process, so maybe she knows more, but you know, consideration of maybe those minimum lot sizes of five thousand and seven thousand square feet are determined to be you know, the size of lot that can better accommodate more units. Um, and then unfortunately, it is related back to parking, um, and if you do establish those minimum lot sizes of five thousand and seven thousand square feet, you can ensure that you will get at least one parking space per unit off off-street. Um, your last comment, I think you made, Remy, in your question kinda speaks to our frustration with this because we had initially had this approach of allowing building form to drive minimum lot size and things like that, and you mentioned, you know, there could be a triplex that is still relatively small, maybe it has three units in it. Um, but that was our thought initially too, is if someone wanted to pursue a a development form like that, that the development standards would scale with the form of the building and unfortunately, the um you know, the rules and the primarily this off-street parking issue kinda throws a wrench in that approach, but.
Yeah, I mean, to put in perspective, during rulemaking, the the assumption was that the more units on a lot, the smaller the units would be. Um, and uh, and so they asked for some data, so I, we went through our data to provide it to them and what we discovered was that the for duplexes and triplexes, the units were not that much smaller than the single family dwelling unit, so we we, people are not building micro units here for a student population, there, we, people are building household units to help home, house families. And so that that assumption didn't play in a an environment like McMinnville, but it, but these rules were really driven by more metro environments, unfortunately. My concern is when you go into some of these neighborhoods and you have families and extended families living in these um homes, there, there, some neighborhoods, it's clear that the that the housing units have up to three cars per unit um, based on what's happening in that home in terms of people trying to get to work, you know, two, two income earners trying to go to different shifts for work and a child trying to get to school. Um, and so if you get to a point where the household units only have the opportunity to have one off-street parking space and then the everyone's, them being pushed onto the street and you have limited on-street parking, it it creates a livability factor that unfortunately, I don't feel is equitable for people who can't afford to live on bigger lots with three-car garages.
Yeah, and this is where the planning commission's idea of maybe we only allow the middle housing types on those smaller lots following those alley-loaded or non-alley-loaded development standards. If we could potentially have have it go through a plan development process and have some other standards in place, like you would still provide parking at our our current code standards or the idea of having that distribution. at our, our current code standards, or the idea of having that distribution of different housing types throughout the development. So that was where that concept came from. I think we need to do some research into whether that's, whether the city would be able to do that legally within the House Bill 2001 rules. But those are some of the ideas that the planning commission was having to still allow for some flexibility, but do so in a way that is more consistent with, you know, McMinnville's, the community's desires for neighborhood livability. So those are, this is probably the, you know, biggest area for discretion within the rules that the city will have in, in making our minimum standards for the middle housing types. So I think there's, yeah, a lot more discussion to have on that particular topic, but we did want to introduce the, the concept and the issue, so you were familiar with it. The last.
Well, I would say, Chuck, if there are city councilors who want to provide direction on that particular discussion, we'd be happy to take it, analyze it, and bring it to the planning commission. Because to me, I think this will be the most controversial piece of this package.
Well, I mean, I'd love to add some commentary on this, but I have to say you've kind of, you know, challenged what I've known to be right, which is that reducing parking standards is going to be more beneficial for creating more affordable housing. And, and so I'm, I'm speaking up to say that I'm not going to speak on this.
Well, and the affordable housing discussion came up in the rulemaking as well, but I don't believe that. So, you know, it's, the premise is the developer's going to do the right thing. But if your developer isn't connected with your community, they're not going to always do the right thing. I would say, in my experience, it's a 50-50 gamble that they'll do the right thing. They're, they're interested in the point of sale and not the enduring value of the neighborhood if they don't have a commitment. And so there's an initial cost of land put into a parking space, but that doesn't travel down to the user. So if I developer save money by not having to set aside land for a parking space, that doesn't mean my savings translates down to the end user at the point of sale. And it definitely doesn't mean that savings continues to travel to the user through the different generational use of the property, because that's all market-driven.
Yeah. So Heather, do we have examples of a average or somewhat of a standard of how many, how many cars are average for a dwelling, let's say a single-family dwelling?
Yeah, so we do have census data that was used for, from McMinnville. So they collected it from the different cities in terms of how many cars per household unit people have. And it's also based on how many cars per type of unit between multifamily and single-family. So we can bring that to you. The majority has more than two, two cars per unit. And that, that's what we were arguing. The argument back was, if you don't allow it to occur, then people will get rid of their cars. But we're, we're still not in an environment that has the transit options that allows that to happen for people who need to get to, need to access work.
There was the option of shared cars or something like that, within a group of three or something like that. It seems like that would take a lot of planning on the people that are buying into part.
Well, and we've heard also that, you know, in more, in more developed areas in the Portland marketplace, Uber plays a much greater role. And we only have a handful in, in McMinnville. So you can't rely on Uber or to get you around town. And as we all know, the buses minimally, you've got to do a lot of walking to get to them.
Well, the margin of error for, for transit is a couple of hours. And so, and that's just accepted. And because it's not a choice system here, it's a dependent system. But if, if you're dependent upon it to get to work on time, and the margin of error is a couple of hours, that's, that's fairly significant.
Yeah.
And so we don't currently serve our employment areas with our transit options because we recognize that that's, that's not a methodology that's going to work. We right now serve our residential areas to critical needs like medical appointments and grocery stores and things of that nature.
Well, we, we find ourselves even in a transitional time right now, over the last year and a half to two years with COVID, you know, working from home, you know, very, very much cut travel, people's cars remain in their, on their lots, you know. But that's transitional. We don't know what that's going to look like in a year to two years from now.
Well, and I would also, I was going to suggest, Mayor, that, that is also relative to different income levels. There's a lot of jobs that people can't do from home. I think about our manufacturing jobs and our shift work, and that's not a remote work opportunity. So.
Well, hospitality in McMinnville, which is a growing industry.
Right. And so when, when we talk about equity, that's also a concern for me if we're, if we're developing, if we're developing our standards for, for a certain demographic that doesn't serve all of our demographics, that doesn't feel like it's equitable.
Right. Kelly?
So we can't be the only town having this problem that's outside the metro area. You see any chances of this changing or, you know, more discussion at the state level?
There was only three towns like McMinnville that were outside the metro area. So this is for communities of 25,000 or greater, and most of those surround the metro area or surround Salem or surround Eugene. So they're all in sort of these larger transit districts. There's three of us who aren't. And so we did raise our hands and didn't get very far. Where I see this changing is, I, I think the discussion of equity is going to start changing it because it doesn't feel equitable to me at all. We had a discussion about how cottage clusters, we had a developer come in and say, for cottage clusters, the parking should be right next to the home because the person coming home with groceries should be able to get up, you know, unload their groceries and get into their home easily. And yet, when we talked about the family that has three cars and can't find a place to park near their home, that, nobody cared about that. So I, I think equity is going to come into play. I also think you're going to start to see cities that, as they grow into 25,000, this is going to impact them. So you're going to have more cities entering this system for smaller cities like McMinnville without the transit options, where this will become more and more impactful. And I think we'll start to, the dialogue will start to change. But right now, it's not. And so we, we need to work within the rules and figure out how to make those rules work for McMinnville.
Seems like you're pretty much stuck then with the lot sizes being larger in these situations.
I mean, that'll be kind of the big decision that will need to be discussed and made. Well, there's one more item I wanted to touch on that the city does have some discretion on. It's more form-based, but the OERs define a duplex, a triplex, and a quadplex as two, three, or four units respectively. And it does define a duplex as two detached, it could include two detached dwelling units on a parcel. And the triplex and quadplex could have any configuration of three or four detached or attached units on a parcel. So what that means is the OERs do allow for the units to be, you know, either attached as is more kind of your traditional approach to a duplex or a triplex, where it's one structure and the units are within that structure. These are just some graphics from the model code that kind of depict what I'm talking about. But the OERs would allow for, you know, the images on the top right and the bottom right, for a duplex, duplex to be considered a duplex with two units on the same lot, but allowing those to be detached. You know, similarly here shown a detached quadplex. And it allows for any configuration of that, whether they're attached or detached. So for instance, you could have a quadplex that has two attached units that kind of look like a traditional duplex like this, and then two standalone single units. So the OERs give the city the flexibility to decide if you want to allow for that attached or detached or any configuration between the two. And so the planning commission's recommendation was, and this is actually something that they had discussed previously before that was introduced within the OERs, but the planning commission's guidance to staff was, was to allow for the detached units in, in any configuration, as long as the base development and design standards are achieved for each individual structure. So they were supportive of that, the planning commission was. And that was their initial thought, was to allow for that additional flexibility within the code. So those were the major, high-level topics that we wanted to introduce to you tonight so you can start to think about them, because those are going to be some of the bigger decision-making points that the city has, has the ability to make a decision on within the rules.
Kelly?
Going back to the topic we've been discussing about the parking, I can see, at least initially, the city taking the stance with using the larger lots as the city grows. I mean, once we get up to 45,000, 50,000, I could see that there might be changes and hopefully our, you know, mass transit system will have improved. You know, I, I think maybe there needs to be like, within the planning, some decision points at certain sizes of the community. But right now, it just doesn't look to me like you got a lot of choices.
Well, and the discussion at the planning commission level was, so our original code still allowed small lots for these types of housing types, if the units were small, right? But it still provided the parking. So it created the density based on size of unit and not based on housing type. So if you have 3,000 square foot units for a triplex, you could be on a much smaller lot than 3, 3,000 square foot units for a triplex, and still achieve the off-street parking requirements and our setbacks and open space and stuff like that. So the discussion at the planning commission level was, let's, let's continue to allow that because that allows flexibility for developers. It provides the standards we want to see occur. And that's why we're trying to get that allowance to happen in the planned development arena, because the, a lot of cities came forward and said, the way the rules were written, there's not much, there's not much ability to really master plan good, you know, any neighborhoods outside of sort of your rigid lot size with different housing types. And so there is an allowance that master plan neighborhoods can go through a different process. So that's why we're hoping the planned development program that we use here in McMinnville will allow for that to occur. And so that's where I think you're going to see, actually, to be honest with you, more density. So in our new developments in the UGB areas where there's that flexibility, but also the ability to create quality and equitable lifestyles for households in different units. And so that's what I'm hoping for. As we, the other thing we need to consider, the push and pull on all of this, is as we create more density and lose less open space on these lots, we're creating more and more impervious surface within the city limits, and, which then is a climate change issue. That's where you're creating heat islands, and you don't have the organic materials, and you don't have the shade canopies of trees because you don't have any place to plant trees and stuff like that. So I do think that finding a balance somewhere in there is really what's going to serve neighborhoods moving forward in terms of that enduring value over generations for a variety of different reasons.
Yeah, it seems like to me, you better write that one into the code, too, that temperatures of various communities are going to be looked at and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I think that we're going to get to a point where, where our drive towards impervious development within UGBs in Oregon is going to actually create some climate issues, and we're going to have to rethink it. And that's what they've discovered in Portland in some neighborhoods. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see how all this evolves.
Well, thank you tonight for such interesting ideas. Really appreciate it.
For all of your hard work up to this point, you know, and, and the hard work of the planning commission and the council and you guys going forward, because we've got to come to some conclusions soon.
And I would be very much in favor of an approach which has these types of things that you're mentioning in mind, that we are taking a forward-looking approach, that we are thinking about the environmental impacts, and that we're, we are really planning for, you know, a future that we understand is not just coming, but is very much here right now, as we're, as our community is really, as many communities are, but our community is really suffering right now from, from the environmental impacts that are happening far and wide. Our community, our community of Oregon is suffering right now.
Yeah, I think, yeah, coordinating this with, with those other considerations is definitely important. And some of our natural future work that we've been working on, we'll definitely take a deeper dive into those issues. Yeah, thank you, everyone. And I'll pass along to the planning commission to your appreciation for their work. They, they really did spend a lot, a lot of time going through the materials in, in great detail over a number of work sessions. So just to close up here, I'll do a brief overview of kind of upcoming milestones. Over the next few months, we are going to continue to work with Herb's Works to finish up developing some draft standards for multiple family or apartments, and then also adding in the single-room occupancy standards that were developed with assistance from the Affordable Housing Task Force, just taking those standards that were already drafted and incorporating them into this document. The planning department's looking at tentatively scheduling a public open house in the October timeframe, where we'll provide an opportunity for information gathering on all the different products that we have going on, this one included in that. And then we plan to do some additional public engagement from October to December, once we have, you know, a bit more of a final draft version of the, of the House Bill 2001 and Missing Middle standards put together, with a goal of, as we said earlier, coming before the planning commission and city council for the more formal public hearing process in early 2022. Ultimately, the, the city does need to make our amendments and adopt those amendments by June. We're, we're hoping to get in a few months earlier than that, so, but that is the ultimate deadline for these code amendments to be made. So all that's to be, more detail to come on all those things over the coming year. And yeah, if there's any other final questions, that was the.
I guess I have one. I, I'm just not clear if we really supplied you with the type of direction that you were looking for clearly enough earlier. And do you mind addressing that?
I think we got, you know, commentary that, that helps us understand what, you know, the focus of the issues might be. I think the big picture items that we talked about with lot size and the parking standards are, are things that are still just going to require a lot of dialogue. So we weren't looking for final decision-making or anything like that tonight. I think we got some direction and understand things that we'll want to analyze a bit further. I don't know, Heather, do you have any other?
Well, I would say, Remy, your comments and concerns as a group echoed the same dialogues that the planning commission is having. So that's good. That means everyone's on the same page and trying to think through this thoughtfully and balance all the needs of, you know, density and affordability and equity and great neighborhood principles that have diverse street housing. So, you know, we just wanted to get a pulse point to make sure that we're all moving forward together in relatively the same way. And the, these are tough dialogues. So it's, you know, we'll continue to analyze it. We'll bring your conversation to the planning commission, and they'll continue to analyze it. The planning commission right now is a very thoughtful group that's working really well together and putting in the time. And so they're serving the city in a very dynamic way.
And then the last thing that I'll ask, and I, I believe the answer is just no, there's nothing in here about this, but I'm going to introduce the topic because it's been coming up. Is there anything in here which causes us to look at standards related to vacation rentals or anything of that nature that either does? um, either does or is perceived to put pressure on affordable housing?
Um, I think so right now, we only allow vacation home rentals in single-family residential units.
Yeah, I was going to say that too, yeah.
Yeah. So the question would be, um, we have a lot of people who are calling us about um when we're going to adopt this code. There are there are developers going around in Oregon picking up investment properties that they're going to subdivide into units um, when these codes are adopted. And um, there is an interest in whether or not the city will ever open up the ability to do vacation home rentals and something other than single-family. So I buy a home, I create it, I I then remodel it into a triplex. I rent out one as a vacation home rental. I live in one and then I rent the other as a long-term rental. Um, so that will be a discussion. What that will mean is that they'll put more pressure on housing units because this is supposed to create more supply. Um, and whether or not we want some of that supply to be carved off for vacation home rentals. Right now, they're only allowed in single-family dwelling units spaced two hundred feet apart from each other. And we were talking about this this morning. We have about fifty of them that are permitted in our residential zones.
And how many do we have that are not permitted?
Um, well, they're not per- well, so we do enforcement, so we do go on to Airbnb and VRBO and we'll look through it to see what's being advertised and compared against our database um, for properties that are in the residential zones. We have, we have vacation home rentals uh occurring in our commercial zone, especially near the downtown for two reasons. Um, one, we don't allow single-family housing in our commercial zone. So that's been problematic. And so people are buying these homes that are deteriorated and been vacated for a year or something and they can't make it into a home because it's a non-conforming use. And so they're making it into vacation home rental. We're going to be coming through in the next couple of months with an amendment to our commercial zone to allow residential, single-family residential homes to be considered um, an allowed use if they're a legacy, we're calling it legacy, Remy, a legacy product where it's where it's been used that way previously.
Okay.
And that way we can preserve that housing type for housing and not have not have so much pressure for that to become vacation home rentals. But that's where you're seeing most of the pressure.
Okay. And then, and please, you'll reel me in if I go too far off here. Uh, uh, and then it kind of wrapped up in that discussion, if that's something that there is concern about, you know, if you have if there are fif- fifty um uh permitted uh uses and that doesn't include what's existing in the commercial zone, then, you know, based on the, I if I believe if my mouth is correct, then based on the number of uh residential customers we have, or, you know, if you're evaluating that by general number of McMinnville water and light customers, um, then we have about uh point three percent of our residential housing then is currently being used as um a a vacation rental-type product. So do we get to um a point where there's a maximum density that we're going to allow or something of that nature within our residential zones if we want to say, you know, no, if you want to have, if you want to do commercial uses, we really want you to do this in a commercial zone?
Um, we can talk about that. Uh, I don't know how many single-family units we have in our residential zones. I I would have, I'd look that up. I know we have fourteen thousand oh dwelling units in McMinnville, close to that. Um, but those are also in multifamily uh where we don't allow vacation home rentals. So we we, if it is a concern of the city council, we can collect the data as to how many single-family residential units we have and what's the proportionality of um vacation home rentals to that? And do we get to a point where it's glutted? I think what you're going to find happening is, um, so there's a lot of people uh because of the tourism market, we're, we field phone calls for short-term rentals probably, I bet we pick up two a week where people are calling us, looking for investment properties. Can I turn this into a short-term rental? And then we go through, and they're all all near the downtown. And we'll go through the map and we'll be like, no, there's another one within two hundred feet of you. So there's very few that actually can find something that will work for them in terms of where they want to be located. We're not seeing a lot of vacation home rentals dispersed into the neighborhoods that are further away from the downtown.
And right now?
Right now, right. So if that's something, and we keep a map of where they're they're all located. In fact, I'll send that to you tonight. Um, so you can see sort of how they're clustering and we can continue to watch that. And if it's something that city council wants to have us report on periodically, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, I thought I would like to see it too. I I think it is important.
Yeah, we'll send it out to um all of city council.
I think that's great. And I and I would like to say, I mean, I um, it's something that I am very conscientious of as we move forward. And I remember when we sent it uh, the vacation rental standard, spacing standards back to planning commission last time, which correlated with our revision of accessory dwelling units. And specifically, we were looking for that review because we were at that point trying to encourage affordable housing and density uh essentially. Um, and that we we wanted to make sure that there was a chance to review that so that it didn't all end up going into vacation rental housing. And one data point that I believe I remember from that time is that there had consistently been about twelve vacation rentals. You know, we really weren't seeing the number of vacation rentals increase generally in the city. And it sounds like that data is changing a lot, that we're, A, we've had a significant increase and B, that there is a lot of interest. So I I do think as a a a community and some of the other vulnerabilities that we face as a community, um, that it's an important thing for us to look at and be protective of. Uh, because, you know, one, what part of what makes McMinnville great is that we have this thriving community and and we don't want to be ghosting out neighborhoods um anywhere in the city.
Yeah. So I think what we'll do is, um, before we send out the map tonight, what I'll do is, um, we'll do a quick little report on how many vacation home rentals there were um, when we adopted the spacing standards and how many there are today. We have maps from when we adopted it, where they were located as well, and we can send those comparisons to you.
Great. Any further discussions or comments? Well, Chuck and Heather, thank you so very much uh for uh the opportunity to bring us up to speed on House Bill uh two thousand and one. Um, and as we've said, thank you for your hard work and share it with staff.
Yeah, and if you, as you're reading the document, if you have comments that you want to send to us, we're in a legislative process, so you can send those to us. We'll bring them to the planning commission for dialogue and continue to put this product together.
Okay, seeing no other hands. Um, again, thank you, and I will uh dismiss or adjourn our uh work session. It is before eight o'clock, you guys, seven fifty-nine. So thank you.